Okay.
Recording in progress.
I just started it.
Are we ready?
Yep. You started it, John.
Okay. School committee chair report. And this is the school committee members and student reports. There's nothing to report at this time. Resource committee?
Resource and building needs will be meeting January 13th.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Policy committee?
Nothing new to report.
Nothing to report. Any questions? Seeing none. Student support committee? Well, we're gonna need a new chair, right?
Yeah.
All right. I would say nothing to report at this time. Personnel committee? Nothing as well. Executive committee? Nothing to report as well. And we have no student reps attending today.
We have transitioned, so we'll have...
Oh, that's right.
...at the next meeting.
School personnel, we have completed two contracts, one we will talk about tonight.
Oh, right. Okay. All right. Next agenda item, approval of minutes of previous school committee meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This is unanimous. Communications? No need for communications tonight. Anyone wishing to comment in the public? Public comment? Say again, any need for public comment? Is there anyone out there? Okay.
No, no one's... No one's contacted.
No one's... Okay, thank you. Next agenda item, superintendent's report. Mr. Joe.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we will kick off my report with Tabitha Greenlee, director of the Pittsburgh High School Band, who's here tonight to give us a summary of the long-awaited trip to Disney. So, welcome, Tabitha, or welcome back.
I'll leave these two things here for you to...
Amazing.
Always have to bring props when possible.
That's right.
So, this is just a quick kind of overview of what it looked like for us going to Walt Disney World just, you know, about two weeks ago. Remarkably. If, for those of you who don't know, we were originally scheduled to be at Disney in April of 2020, but we have finally gone after two years of planning. Here we go. So, our first day, before I forget, because I know I will, and that's why I put it first up, I want to give a special thanks to Bennett Student Travel, who organized all of our kind of logistical end of things. They've been fantastic. Doug and Deanna are both Pittsburgh High School graduates and members of the band at their time. So, it was, we love being able to work with them, and they've done kind of, Bennett Travel has done all of the travel arrangements for the band for a very, very long time. So, we love them in local Pittsburgh. And my chaperones, April, Andy, and Stacy, who were fantastic. You know, we can't take all these kids out of state without a lot of other adult supervision. So, that was wonderful. And a super special shout-out to Jackie Lassard, the nurse at Pittsburgh High School, who was our, like, specific nurse liaison for our trip. So, Jackie, thanks very, very much. So, here's, all of the photos that you're gonna see tonight were either taken by, were taken by students. So, I've learned my lesson over the years that we do physical check-ins, and they also have to do texting check-ins. So then, I get a whole bunch of photographs of the kids that they, like, love, of them in their environment and just having the greatest time. So, all the photos that you see have been submitted and shared by students. In fact, I had some this afternoon after I shared this presentation with them this morning during class. They said, "Oh, wait, you forgot this one." I said, "Okay, fine, send it." Here we go. So, first, we, that was, you know, kind of us arriving at the Providence Airport. And on the flight, we had some pretty funny stewards and stewardesses, flight attendants, who kind of said, "We have this big group of people traveling with us. That's where all the cool kids are gonna sit, is in the back. So, if you could just avoid sitting with them, that'd be great." And so, you can see that we all got to be able to sit together. We arrived pretty late Thursday night. The kids had a great time in the pool, and they were really, really impressed with the Murphy beds that opened in all of their hotel rooms, and they wanted me to show you what that looked like. Because it was really kind of surprising. You had no idea that it was present and accounted for. The first, there's some photos from the All-Star movies where we stayed. And our first day, full day, was spent at the Magic Kingdom. So, here we are in front of that 50th anniversary castle, the whole band. Fantastic. And like I said, all of these are just the kids sending me photos throughout the day when I say, "Hey, give me a check-in. Where are you? What's the situation? Who are you with?", as well as, like, those physical check-ins throughout the day. Patrick insisted that we show the zoomed-in photo of him having the greatest time of his life on Splash Mountain. There's a couple others that look like this. The Shellshock, it's really quite endearing, so we have lots and lots of photos of them having just the best time at the Magic Kingdom.
Can you go back one? Was that you with a...
That's me with a Dole Whip, of course.
All right.
So, I sent this text to all of the kids, and I said, "Current situation?", with this photo. And I got so many back. Like, the kids next to me on the left, they were like, "Oh, my gosh, we're having ice cream too." But we forgot about Dole Whips. That's where we're going next.
Awesome.
Yeah, you have to have it while you're there. That's me on Space Mountain as well, one of my favorite roller coasters there. Another very enthusiastic band kid having the time of their life on Splash Mountain, as you can clearly see. Some more photos, more and more. And then, at the end of the night, we had this kind of little dance party right outside, all just in a big congregating circle. Good fun. So, kids actually, like, in the center, turning, rotating the phone as if her hands were Lazy Susan. It's actually pretty, pretty remarkable. So, some more photos that they've submitted from their time at the Magic Kingdom. Now, this person here, this kid, is not one of ours, but boy, what a great photobomb for the fireworks display at the end of the night. So, our performance day, the next day, on December 18th, here's a photo of us kind of behind the scenes on our way as honorary cast members for the day at Disney, which is really very, very spectacular. We were able to perform at Disney Springs for about 20 minutes, which is a change from what we were initially planned to do, which was to march down Main Street, USA. But with changes to their COVID protocols, that did not become a possibility for us. We found out about two weeks before our departure that that was gonna be a change. So, here we are at the Imagination Campus during our warm-up. Mickey leading, doing a great job leading the band. Some snaps that the kids took backstage before. And you can see, I brought a set of these ears. They are not available to anybody in the public. They are only given to honorary cast members for the day. They have the Disney Performing Arts insignia on the front, and you cannot purchase them. They are only gifted to students. So, we have these very special ears that you can see in our performance. One of the coolest things that happened to us during our performance is, behind us, you can see here, is the Rainforest Cafe. It's one of the largest kind of in the world, I believe. And we can all check performing during an active volcano eruption off of our bucket lists, because as we are playing Funky Town, you can hear and see this volcano eruption.
Oh, that's cool.
I thought that it was a problem with the sound, and so, if you could have seen my face when the volcano erupted, I had no idea, because I thought that it was just a distortion in the sound. Because you can hear these, like, pshh, pshh sounds and kind of this low rumbling, and then, all of a sudden, the magma just cuts. Yeah, so there it goes in full, full display. Quite nicely timed, which is really great. But you can see, at that moment, I mean, I, like, lost it, my face and the kit. Like, I saw a couple of really quizzical looks, like, "What are you doing?". And it's because I just saw this, like, giant volcano explode behind me. You can see, yeah, see, you can hear that really, really clear, like, on the thing. So, you can watch the entirety of our performance, as I said, where we play eight songs for about 20 minutes. You can see the entirety of the performance at the Pittsburgh High School Music Facebook page. You can see each one of those clips divided on Instagram and on Twitter. And I just confirmed this afternoon that FATV is gonna show it at some point. I don't know when, but when that happens, I'll let everybody know, because that'll be a great, a great thing for us to be able to share with our community. We picked music kind of carrying on from our field show music, which was all kind of funk music, because we really just wanted to get back into the groove of playing together and having all of the fun about playing together with each other, because it's been too long for us to do so. After that, we went to Hollywood Studios. I can tell you from these photographs, and you will obviously see that we are a Star Wars band. Big fans. We had six kids purchase lightsabers while they were there, and I can tell you that one of the most extraordinary things I've ever heard in my life is listening to the kids in the room next door to me after lights-out, having an imaginary lightsaber battle. To the point that I thought I was, like, sending kids home, because I couldn't exactly, like, tell what was happening in this room. And it was really quite extraordinary. They had just a great time. So, we have a couple of kids submitted photos of their adventures while they were there. Of course, they loved going on Hollywood, the Tower of Terror. We can see some terrorized faces in these photos as well. This one's a good one, like, "We barely survived." I love this face, like, "Check, we did it!", but also, "We're scared." Mrs. Fornier and I went on the rock and roller coaster. We made fun of the really awful notation that you see on the guitar that makes no sense. Yeah, it was a great, great time for us. And here, as I said, this, the lightsabers. Here's one instance. Okay, so I, I think that there's some Star Wars fans in the room as well. These are not, like, you can't buy anywhere else except for this place. They are high-quality and worth every penny, because when they let me hold one, I said, "Absolutely worth it. I should have bought one myself." So, here's them in front of this Millennium Falcon, doing something similar. So, that one didn't make it, obviously. But I can tell you, it is one of the most spectacular things to see these kids having, like, the time of their life. When we left Hollywood Studios, we met at this huge expanse, and from, like, a football field away, I could just see these lightsabers, and I knew that it was our kids just, like, having such a great time. So, really spectacular. This third day, so this is when we went to the Imagination Campus for our workshop. This is an extraordinary opportunity for our students. They work for about two and a half hours with a Disney clinician and someone who works on property as a musician. And they kind of talk through what it's like to be a musician on property, what it's like to have to fill in last minute as a third clarinetist in the Candlelight Carol, which is what we heard from Scott, this story that he told the kids about, you know, last night. I had to go in and sit in with this ensemble, and what do you have, you are a musician, to be prepared to sit in with somebody who you've never played with before. And everyone expects that it will be this incredible performance. What do you do? How does that happen? And so, within those, those time, that time period, working with the Disney clinician, the kids get so much feedback about what they're doing really, really well, and the places where they can improve as musicians themselves. And it is always a really transformative experience for the students. That's the only photograph from the event, because the broadcasting of anything that happens within the workshop is strictly prohibited by Disney. So, that's how you get. After we went to the workshop, we went to Animal Kingdom, and again, a bunch of student-generated photographs. Always a hidden Mickey. You have to check for them everywhere. This is from the new Avatar section, which is quite spectacular. It shows in bioluminescence in the evening. Just extraordinary. In order to go on this ride, that you see Mrs. S., April, standing in line for, she waited three hours to go on this ride, but she is one of only a handful of people who managed to get on it from our group. Everybody else gave up. They said, "No way are we waiting."
And is that both Greenleys on the top, right?
It is, yes. We are, we are on the rapids.
Love it.
Yeah. About to get thoroughly drenched. Like, we did not, we did not survive. The rapids, but yes, that's, that's the two of us.
Nice.
A tidal wave of water.
It was very, very fun. Always worth it. Love to see a brontosaurus in a Santa hat. And then, some more photos. So, our last day, we spent at Epcot before we traveled. And the kids loved being able to visit all of the different countries and eat, eat their way around the big park. So, there's been a lot of food photos for the day. Lots of happy food photos. And there's us departing from Orlando. So, finally, I have some quotations that have taken from the kids about their experiences there, which I hope that you'll just take a moment to read.
Were they nervous before their performance at Disney Springs?
I would say a little. However, we were very prepared. So, that's something that helps with nerves. You know, you know this about your, your own lives. The more prepared that you feel in any situation, the more confident that builds for you, and the less mistakes that you're probably going to make, because you feel very secure in what you know and what you're going to be able to do. So, a little bit of nerves, but such tremendous pride with which they walked onto the stage in order to represent all of us. It was really wonderful. They played like absolute gangbusters.
Quotes are very telling.
Yes.
More than the quote itself, you know? I bet they really needed this.
Pardon?
I bet they really needed a vacation right now. I bet this is just something that students really needed.
Right.
You know? But a lot of people could.
Yeah, we had a lot of, you know, I, do we really have to leave? Can we go back next year? Can we go in the spring? It was like, oh, it takes, like, at least a year for us to plan this, so...
I'm sure.
No?
Sometimes longer if it's COVID, right?
Pardon?
Sometimes longer because of COVID.
Sometimes longer, yes, yes. Sometimes two years it takes to plan, but here we are. We made it.
Oh, wow.
Feedback.
So, I give you all the truth, unfiltered. So, everything that they say is exactly, you know, I love the, "It's eight out of 10".
Eight out of 10. Exactly the way.
Or the kids, like, that says, "I really enjoyed it, but the walking, that was a lot."
Be honest with you.
Yeah, and then you have, like, very specific, you know, like, "I learned this one technique, and now I feel like I'm such a significantly better player by just doing this one thing differently in my life." And that's why going to clinics and performances and getting that feedback from adjudicators is so important, because I'm only one person, and so, if I say it in this way, or in a different way, or in a different way, that kid may never understand it, but somebody else says it, and they're like, "Oh, I get it. That's what you mean." So, really, really wonderful. And this is the last.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there, are there any questions?
While representing the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I don't have ears to share.
Happy for all of you.
Yes, thank you.
That you're good to go.
It's great to be able to share a celebration.
Isn't it? Isn't it? Yes. Jeremy came to see me the day that we arrived, I want you to know, and said, "I see, but there's a golden Mickey? When do I get to see the golden Mickey?" I said, "I have to go to the school committee first, Jeremy." Now, I can go to the main office, and I can live there for a while before it goes into our trophy case.
Nice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tab. Wonderful.
Your update, Bob?
Yep. So, next, I'd like to give an update on terms of not only just our health update that's incorporated in the, my overall update, and then I have a second presentation just on the redistricting committee update, the work that we've been doing and the work that we've shared out with the redistricting committee. So, first, John's in control of the...
There we go.
...the PowerPoint here, so thank you.
We have a little bit of a delay.
Okay.
What does this say up there?
Okay, it looks like, looks like we're syncing up here.
File, create my share, share, from beginning. You see what I'm doing, right?
Yeah, I see what you're doing.
I don't know why it's not coming up. There.
Okay, there you go.
There we go. Now, we want to...
Okay, all set?
All set.
All right. So, thank you, John. Wanted to just recap, just a little summary of what the presentation, the first presentation, just, you know, what, what our foundation is, our commitments and values, a little bit of a strategic plan update. Also, I'd be remiss if tonight I didn't get a little bit of a COVID update, and also some milestones that we have coming up in the, I'll say, the first half of this calendar year, or what remains of this school year slash fiscal year. So, so, first of all, just like to reiterate what our, what our commitments are here in the district. This is really the start of almost all our presentations, now our commitments and values, curriculum that's accessible and reflective of our students, tiered system of support, staff development, and diverse recruitment plan. And lastly, a sense of welcoming and belonging for all members of our school community, staff, students, and families. Our strategic plan, which we are still working on, it contains really five core values that we've established, and we're in the process of, again, including as part of the overall plan, growth-focused, and really, this is our fear of action that all our students and even adults can grow and achieve in the district. Vulnerable, being honest, and when we're doing something right, and where we can make improvements on. Trustworthy, you know, working together as a team, whether it be across the school district or also with external partners. Adaptability, this is something that I think everybody in the community receives an A+ on in terms of the changes that we've made over the last almost two years now, in terms of the ever-evolving situation that we face with COVID, whether we're remote, hybrid, or full in-person. Things are always changing, and the only thing that's certain is probably a little bit of uncertainty. And lastly, working together as a team and collaborating to make this all happen.
Excuse me, superintendent? Is it possible to make that a little bit larger?
You know what? Probably on the next one, I will make it larger. This is just kind of a picture from a slideshow, so it will, yeah, it, it needs to be bigger. Thank you. So, from a strategic plan update, I don't know, John, if you, we can go back and forth if you want to take the first, or I'll take the second, too?
Yeah, absolutely. So, for our first one, we have curriculum that is reflective and accessible to all students. So, as you all know, the approval of our elementary reading program last year was, allowed us to provide the most up-to-date curriculum for our students, and we are having rave reviews from both our staff at our elementary schools in addition to our students, and then also, high-quality curriculum that aligns to our standards. So, we are currently looking at all our curriculum right now to make sure it is up-to-date. You know, the state recommends that we do this process every six years, looking at our curriculum and making sure we're using the most up-to-date curriculum. So, we're setting to making sure we're doing that process for all our curriculum areas. For the next piece, the tiered system of academic and social-emotional support, we have had all teachers complete the social-emotional assessment at all our schools for our students so we can best meet their needs. In addition, the district, with the school committee's support, allowed us to provide additional clinical support, or clinical interventionist staff members at all our schools in the district. So, we have additional social-emotional support for all our students now in our schools. And then, really, when we think about quality academic tiered system of support, this year, we are making sure all our students are getting quality, tier-one instruction at their grade level, providing students with the appropriate supports or scaffolds that they need to access that grade-level curriculum. The state put out something called an acceleration roadmap in response to our pandemic over the last almost two years now, and we are utilizing that roadmap throughout the district this year.
Okay, so, continuing on, one priority for, for the district has been staff development and diverse staff recruitment. Over the last couple of years, we've been working with a few external organizations. Focus Schools, who I mentioned earlier, who has been working with us, not only in terms of helping us create a strategic plan for the district, but has been working with initially two schools, Pittsburgh High School and McKay, to put in systems that help students grow and achieve. They're now actually working with all our schools in a little bit more limited capacity, but to have consistent systems and practices across the district, whether it be at the elementary, middle, or high school level. Also, future management systems has been working with several schools in terms of expanding our leadership teams and developing teacher leaders. The statewide system of support works with four of our schools who are in the accountability zone, and they continue to support us and provide us any guidance that the state is lending to, let's say, similar districts. lending to, let's say, similar districts. And we also have this year expanded our co-teaching initiative with an external partner, and that's beginning to yield some results in terms of improved student engagement and outcomes there. Lastly, just on the recruiting front, we, Fitchburg is one of, I think, over 20 communities who are part of the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education. There was a virtual hiring event December 21st, that was the first of two. The second one is planned for some time in the next few months. I apologize, I don't have the date handy. John Harmon, our HR Director, does have that and is leading that initiative. And, and lastly, just as Fitchburg is a welcoming and diverse community, we want to make sure every student, staff, and parents all feel that they are welcome and have a voice in their child's education and their future. A few things that we're doing to expand on that, we'll be starting a peer mediation program soon with, at Longchamp Middle School. We'll be retaining, we plan to retain Anti-Defamation League with some programming on how to stop the hate program, and also some anti-bias training, and we continue to work with Dig Deep for Equity, Dr. Nissa Monte Jackson. She's scheduled to start our professional development day on January 31st. Okay, so I'll switch gears here and just give a little bit of a COVID update. The next few slides are really the snippets or pictures from the CDC's latest guidance that was just released on December 27th, which shortened the stay-at-home period from 10 days to five days. I'm not going to read each of these slides, these will be posted on our, on our website and will be emailed to our staff. But again, if you test positive for COVID-19, isolate the condition, stay home for five days. If you don't have any symptoms, you can leave your house and continue to wear a mask for an additional five days. And if you have a fever, to continue to stay home. And if you're exposed to someone with COVID-19 and quarantined, again, then there's, you know, stipulations if you've been boosted, had a booster shot, or completed the primary series of the Pfizer or Moderna, two shots in the last six months, or received the J&amp;J in the last two. Again, wear a mask around others for 10 days, test after day five, and develop any symptoms, get a test, and stay at home. And lastly, you know, if you're, if you've completed the primary series of Pfizer, Moderna over six months ago, or the J&amp;J over two months ago, or are unvaccinated, stay home for five days, after that, continue to wear a mask for five day, additional days. If you can't guarantee, if you can't quarantine, you must wear a mask for 10 days and test on day five if possible. And again, in all of these cases, if you're not feeling well, you know, we're encouraging staff or students to stay home and to get tested as well, because also now it is flu season as well, and so I'll keep going on, I'll expand a little bit more on the here and now. So just to remind people watching in the community, the City Board of Health is making available the testing, the nose testing, Tuesdays and Thursdays at 49 Nursery Lane from 12 to 4 through March 31st here to help, you know, interested citizens identify if they have COVID. Okay, you're shaking your head. Next, the Board of Health is also offering vaccination clinics beginning on, here we go, here, on Saturday, January 8th, on Fridays and Saturdays through, I think, through the end of January here. The times have been expanded, and we're trying to be more accessible to members of the community and work schedules. So, just, you know, sharing out the information here by way of FATV to communicate the information. The school department did host a vaccine clinic last Thursday during vacation, and we did have 154 individuals receive vaccinations. While vaccinations are one of the best risk mitigation actions people can take, there are other things that, again, given the recent increase in COVID, and going back to the early days here, to wear a mask when possible, distance, you know, hand wash, sanitize your hands, and I think, you know, just in general, what we've said before, is if you're eligible for the flu shot, I don't know if the flu shots are still being offered by physicians or pharmacies, but that's another preventative action to take to stay safe and healthy here. So from a school perspective, before the break, we actually, through the city of Fitchburg, was eligible as one of, I think, 100, and I don't know if it's 110 or 12 communities that received some support from, was it the state? And the Board of Health provided us test kits for staff and students. So each staff and school student who was in attendance on the Thursday before the winter break was able to take home a test kit. Yesterday, the Department of, we distributed additional test kits to staff. The Department of Ed had made rapid test kits available to all public schools throughout the state. There was a little bit of a kerfluffle in terms of the supply chain when those masks were to be ready. The masks were supposed to be ready Friday, they weren't, or the test kits weren't, were supposed to be ready Friday, they weren't ready till Saturday. We picked them up Saturday, we just distributed them Sunday. In addition, last week, the Department of Ed made available 30 K95 masks to, to staff in schools, so those are in the process of being distributed across our schools to staff. And lastly, today, for those who weren't able to receive a test kit before the break or unable to pick one up yesterday at South Street, there were safety test kits, or rapid test kits, available at schools this morning, where staff came and did a rapid test. And tomorrow, we have the weekly pool testing starts up for 2022 for students and staff who have opted in. And earlier, well, today, but late this afternoon, I was informed by Athletic Director Craig Antassi of a change in athletics spectatorship. The MidWatch League, which consists of 26 schools, is going to limit spectator attendance at all games and events to just immediate household members. The spectator limit will be in effect for two weeks, at least through January 17th of 2022, and will be assessed by the league membership at that time to determine if it can be eased to allow students, community, and other spectators at events. So that was something that was originally agreed to by the 26 athletic directors, and the principals in the MidWatch League needed to vote on that, and Jeremy Roach, our high school principal, is the secretary of that group, and that vote did happen today. So, some, you know, small changes for the next couple of weeks, we'll be monitoring those as the pandemic, I guess, continues, or whatever trend it takes.
So, in the statement, it says, voted to limit spectator attendance at all games and events. What does that mean? What's limit? No one can go, or?
No, they're trying to keep it to the immediate household members only.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And how was that, how was that enforced?
I don't know. That I don't have the answer to.
Yeah, I, you know, I applaud your effort, but what's the end game here? How can you figure out whose family, whose household and who isn't? I mean, whatever, okay. My little editorial, sorry. Okay. Yeah. Okay.
All right, you want to pick it up from here, John?
Yeah, absolutely. So we wanted to just update the school committee and the community regarding our testing that's coming up. So, starting Thursday this week, we have access testing for our EL students, our English Language learners, which is, begins this Thursday, and will go from February, to February 10th. So from Thursday until February 10th, we'll be testing our students who are English learners. Eva, I know Eva's out in the crowd, is there anything you want to add to that, Eva, about access testing?
The schools are ready to go. They're looking good, yeah.
And then, lastly, just update on MCAS. We are, we are MCAS testing again this year, so we have some tests coming up right away in February, which is the high school biology test, which is on February 2nd and 3rd. For grades three to eight, English Language Arts assessment will be given between March 28th and April 29th. For grades three to eight, the math assessment will be given from April 25th to May 27th. And for grades five and eight, for Science, Technology, and Engineering, MCAS, that will be given from April 26th to May 27th. For grade 10, English Language Arts, the window, the days for that are March 22nd and March 23rd. And then for grade 10 math, those dates are May 19th and May 20th. And then finally, high school, Science, Technology, and Engineering, those test dates are June 7th and June 8th. So that's pretty much a summary of our MCAS dates for the remainder of the year.
And this is all in person?
In person, yep.
In person, yep. Good.
All in person. Okay, just, again, just trying to keep the school committee informed of major events here. The Crocker Elementary School Project, the MSBA approved the total project budget of $65 million, with the city cosure of about $22 million. The city council approved the cosure in the summer, last summer. We're presently in what's called the design development phase. We're working with our architect, Sam Architecture Colliers, who's our project manager, but the subconsultants to design subsystems, the mechanical, electrical, HVAC, civil engineering, landscaping, furniture fixtures, kitchen, et cetera. And based on these meetings, you know, at the end of this phase, there will be an additional cost estimate revision. There are several cost estimate revisions that happen throughout the process, so that'll happen before construction documents, which is projected to begin in March of '22, and after those construction documents are put together, then it goes through another cost estimate revision. So I just want to throw out some, you know, milestones in terms of what has happened, what's happening now, and what's going, planned to happen in the very near future.
Superintendent Jokel, I'm sorry to interrupt, but Dr. Knight has her hand up, she has a question.
Okay, yep, go ahead.
Dr. Knight, you have a question?
Yes, yes, yes. I forgot to say Happy New Year to everyone, but I do have a question about the strategic plan update. And then, I am not sure if there's any provision or anything planned to set aside some funds to assist in the recruitment and hiring of staff of diverse backgrounds. I know that the, the government, I know that the government of the United States has some funds through the ESAR funds, or even the Student Opportunity Act. I understand there's a $1.5 billion that somewhere out there, I don't know if, you know, what exactly Fitchburg is going to get, but is there anything in place, thinking about that, so that we can have a more diverse body of educators and administrators in the, in our school system? Thank you.
Okay, well, I can tell you that the legislature has a couple laws in, or, you know, under review. One is to try to increase the diverse applicants across public schools. The US Department of Education did issue some, some guidance just last month on potential uses of, well, ESAR or RAR funds that school districts are receiving. So we're, we're looking at that right now, that was just released right before the holiday break, and, and I think, you know, lastly, one of the things that we're experiencing along with probably almost every school district in the country is, you know, staffing crises currently, too, so trying to attract and retain current staff. So we're trying to, again, going back to one of our commitments, we are trying to diversify our employees, and we're looking at different ways to do that. And one thing I did mention that we, that we have joined that we hadn't been doing in prior years is joining the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education. But even that virtual career fair yielded very low interest, because in that group of school districts, we're, we're competing against Lexington and, and Boston. So those are two districts that have a lot more, at least for financial resources to offer, but it's something that we're looking at and, and I would say, trying to develop much more robustly.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else about the Crocker project?
I think that's it on Crocker, is that it?
I think we got it.
I might add on that. And then I think then we'll go to the redistricting. And Eva, I just might call you up when we get to the maps. Okay? You're ready? Good. There we go. Hey, two for two now.
Hey, look at that.
All right. So I'll skip the commitments and the values, I covered that in the, in the prior presentation. So this presentation is a verbatim, other than the, the date of the first slide, what we shared to the redistricting committee, which consists of principals at each school, a teacher at each school, one to two parent representatives from each school, and members of central office, along with Mr. Stevens, who's a school committee representative on this subcommittee. So first of all, as, as all the decisions that we make, you know, we base it on what's best for our students to grow and achieve. Two of the main goals or two of the main outcomes of this redistricting will be the creation of an early childhood center to prepare students for our elementary grades. That'll consist of pre-kindergarten and kindergarten center at South Street, and then returning the fifth-grade students from the middle schools to elementary schools. So this little timeline here kind of summarizes what's happened now over the last, I guess, I guess we could say, three months now, because we're in January. So since November, we've met as a senior leadership team, reviewing teacher concerns, developing responses to the teacher concerns meeting with the Teachers Union Cabinet is also another name for our senior leadership team here. We've met with the Teachers Union, put in a process, or created a process for a teacher assignment as these moves are made, shared that with our, with our teachers and also our principals, and also drafted some district maps, which, this is Eva Kelly, is going to present a little bit later on here. We are, we have and are still reviewing the location of special education programming and the classrooms. That's just something that's probably a little bit more involved, as there are some more moving pieces in terms of, you know, the students coming into the programs, especially this year with, with dealing with COVID. And lastly, just meeting with each of the school principals before the break and presenting to the redistricting committee, which we did the, on the 15th. Again, we want to, this month, or the next couple of months, I should say, establish an early childhood center subcommittee, try to get that in place this month. We want to be able to We want to be able to get the job description together by the end of the month so we can start looking for the best possible leader for that school. Present data and information to the student support subcommittee. I understand that there's some transition with the school committee members, but that's the proper starting point for that. And again, the human resources department will be distributing a teacher preference form this month, and again, we'll be presenting more information on the, through the school committee next month as well. Okay, you want to?
Yeah, absolutely. So during our meetings with the different stakeholders in the city, we had some teachers who were on the committee and throughout the district kind of bring up some concerns. So the three big areas were around assignments, building concerns, and just other concerns in general. They were looking at, around assignments, the programs and supports that were going to be at each school, questions around co-teaching. As Bob stated earlier, we have a large co-teaching initiative happening throughout the district. Teachers were wondering if teams were going to be able to stay together with the moves that are going to happen. Another issue that teachers were concerned about were classroom locations and buildings. What class will I be, what building will I be going to and what classroom will I have? The school administrators, who will be my principal? And then, any teacher pair of teams, will that continue if I'm being moved? So building concerns, some of the concerns that were raised were around internet infrastructures, building repairs, concerns at specific buildings, parking, will there be enough parking in addition to kind of drop off and pickup for parents and buses? They know all those logistics around, you know, parent pickup, parent drop off and pickup. And then other piece that came up with staff were around start and end times. What will the school hours be? In addition to, who will be painting my classroom? Am I allowed to paint my classroom or will someone come in and do that? And then the biggest concern, I think we heard from all teachers, was around moving. Will we be given time to pack up our classrooms if we're moving? Who will be moving my belongings from one building to the other? So those were kind of the concerns that we are hearing from our teaching staff at our different buildings.
Okay, one.
Let me continue?
Yeah.
Absolutely. So the other piece, Bob, I'm sorry, Superintendent Jokola and his cabinet met with the union executive board, and we came up with a procedure of reassigning staff that will be affected in the redistricting process. So another joint committee with the district and the union, and we were able to kind of come up with these four steps that we will follow when we are assigning teachers to new buildings. And I'm just going to read these and go over them with you. For kind of the first step is staff will be assigned to a school based on their current 21, 22 school year position. So whatever position you are in now, you will be assigned to a new building if you're being affected at that same grade level. So staff being moved from South Street McKay in grade five, we are asking them to complete a Google form that will be going out in the next two weeks to indicate their first, second, and third school choice. After that, we'll look at staff school preferences and then being, sorry, staff preferences, staff seniority will be used to determine school placements for staff at South Street McKay in grade five. And then lastly, staff can apply for any open positions after the school assignments have been completed. So again, we'll make those moves based on their current grade levels, and then based on those moves, if a staff member sees another opening in a school, they can go ahead and apply, and they'll be granted an interview for that position. So those, that's kind of the process that we will be using to reassign staff throughout the district. Ms. Kelly?
So now it's map time. So Eva Kelly has been, I'll say instrumental, working with Donna Hildreth, our transportation coordinator, to try to, I guess, equitably distribute students at our schools and make sure that the numbers are as close to equal as possible in terms of the enrollment based on the capacity and what makes most sense also from a neighborhood perspective. So a daunting challenge nonetheless. So Eva, you want to?
Yeah, so I know this is really small, no way you can tell what's going on here, so I'm just going to walk you through it, and this is a draft. So if you look at the blue area, this is the elementary map. If you're looking, starting on the left-hand side of the blue area, this is the Crocker area. It is the area between Ashburnham Street, down to River, up Rollstone Street to Ellis. The right side of South Street, across to Spruce, the Spruce Street area to Water Street, up Blossom, beginning at Blossom, only the left side of Pearl Street. And Crocker will also include Ashby West Road and Ashburnham Hill Road. I know that's really hard to see, so I'm going to keep going unless you have questions about that area. So the red area is the McKay area. That includes, starting at the McKay building in the middle, that's the college area, Ringe Road, Stony Brook, New West Townsend Road to Lunenburg Street, over Bemis and up to Wunusnok, up Water Street to the Fifth Street Bridge. So that area is going to include Green Acres or the Latine Normandy Street area. And the Rhine Gold area is the green area. That would include Meadowbrook, up Canton Street to Haywood, left on Walton, the Hazel Street area, Kimball Street, and up to Westminster Hill Road.
And do you want to just talk about the numbers and why they're there quickly?
Yeah.
So we're, again, we had to relocate the students at South Street because South Street will be the kindergarten center. So we're putting predominantly about three classrooms of students over at McKay and two at Rhine Gold. And Crocker is receiving some of our special ed programs. I don't know if that's going to be in the.
Yeah, I'll go over that in a little bit.
So, and we're also moving some of the special ed programs. So not wanting to overload Crocker where they're going to be under construction pretty quickly, you know, once the redistricting is done. So those are preliminary numbers. So you can see McKay has about 710, Crocker has 635, and Rhine Gold's at 624. So this is the middle school map, and again, we had to relocate all the middle school students at McKay. Predominantly, they're going to Long Joe, just given where they're living, right? Because many of them live in the college area, but I'll walk you through this area as well. So the blue area is Memorial, and it starts at Ashburnham Hill Road to Ashby West to Sawmill Pond Road off of Route 2, Rollstone Road to Mount Elum, the right side of South Street over to Laurel and Kimball. It will include Meadowbrook and up Canton. So the reason why, right now Laurel-Kimball, they go to Long Joe, but we're trying to prevent them, you know, crossing bridges to get to school because that's a walking area to Long Joe, and that's a long walk. So the red area is the Long Joe area. It's River Street, all of north of Maine, all of Bemis Road, up to Wunusnok and Water. Green Acres will be at Long Joe. And, you know, more students will be going over to Long Joe from McKay than to Memorial.
And our numbers for our middle schools will be pretty equal?
Pretty equal, yes. So 610 at Long Joe and 580 at Memorial. And that doesn't, again, include the special ed programs that we're moving, right?
Yep.
This is just students where they live. You guys have any questions?
Any questions on the maps? I know it's kind of hard to understand without the names of the roads, but.
I just have a general question. Is there any coordination between the school map and the voting maps, the districts?
The wards?
I didn't look at the voting maps.
Totally separate, just, yeah.
Separate.
I wish Fitchburg was a grid, it would be a lot easier.
You got any more questions?
Yeah. I guess I don't know how to really articulate it, but with a lot of, you know, whenever we're doing, drawing the lines for schooling, for busing, I guess there's just a lot of history behind that. The process behind this was really just to allocate, I mean, yeah, I guess, just talk me through the process of how you drew the lines. Was there?
Well, we had preliminary lines, right? Because we did this six years ago now. So really, I'm just, what, Donna has a mapping system, TransFinder. She can draw this circle, and she can tell me how many students are living in the area we drew.
Okay.
So we tried to keep the lines as close, like, we don't want to move kids unnecessarily, right? So we tried to keep them as close to where they are, but again, we had to make accommodations because all the, I'm sorry, McKay students had to be absorbed into the two middle. Most of the McKay kids live over in the Long Joe area, but we have outliers that live in different parts of the city that have moved, that didn't, you know, move to their neighborhood school when they moved. So most of them are going to be at Long Joe. So the only real change is that Kimball-Laurol Street area, which again, now goes to Long Joe, but they're crossing two and three bridges to get to school because it's a mile and a half walk route. So we tried to see if we could somehow maybe have those kids on the Memorial side.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does.
I mean, we'd love to walk you through it, really, Donna and I.
Yeah.
Anyone who wants to come by.
Yeah.
Glad to show you how we do it.
A question, I think I have more pointed questions to ask, and I'll just give them to you in an email or something like that.
That would be great.
Yeah, sure.
Yep. Anything else?
Some of those lines, kids might go to Long Joe, and now they're going to be moved to Memorial.
Minimum number, minimum.
Minimum number. Are we going to take into consideration maybe some eighth graders who we'll say are at Memorial, and now they've been shifted to Long Joe District?
I just have to look at the numbers. Like, I just have to see how many numbers, how many kids.
Yeah, are we going to be able to allow somebody to, that's been at Memorial, we'll say, for three years, finish out their fourth year? Or are we going to be transferring eighth graders?
We can certainly consider it, yeah.
Yeah, I would, you know.
Yeah, I'll be getting those calls.
Yeah, I think those are the tough ones.
I know, I know. It's just difficult to start making exceptions because.
Transportation, right?
Transportation, and once you make an exception for one person, it's really difficult to redraw that line, I find.
It's still very difficult if you have somebody in that last grade where they've been in school, and we're talking about social, emotional issues that we need to make some help for those students.
Absolutely, and I, we do have the appeal process, and we do make exceptions. There are always exceptions.
That transition year is going to be the tough one.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we said this to the redistricting committee back in the middle of December, you know, these, we have more answers now than we did at the first meeting in November, but this is not yet set in stone.
Yeah.
So we're, it's evolving, and again, we're getting input from you here tonight as well, so.
Redistricting is always, it's always tough, that first year or two to.
Yeah.
Just something that I thought of as I was listening to others, in the pecking order, I would, I would think that the parents would come first as, to decide what's best for their child. You brought up a seventh grader, one year left. And that would go a long way to calm the waters rather than saying the rigidity of either bus requirements or district requirements are the first priority.
And we do, we do have the appeal process. We're not taking that away.
Yeah, I know, but appeal process, again, if you talk about social, emotional, it's a comfort if you could say, I spoke to her or I spoke to him, and it was a wonderful conversation, we'll do everything. Rather than saying, you can always appeal this, and oh, you, as a parent, go through a process, that's off-putting.
I have a lot of conversations.
But I would say the top priority is to make it comfortable for the parent who has their reasons, primary reasons for what you say.
So usually people, parents will call, and we have a conversation, and then they decide whether to go forward with the appeal process or not, and then more investigation goes into what's going on.
But that's the point, dear. I'm just saying, a process, a process, a process. I'd like that for first process, that when the parent calls with their concern, that they know that you're on their side rather than, I'm on the side of what's already been drawn up. You see what I'm saying?
I do.
Yeah, I mean, throughout life, you hear this over and over again with government entities, that whatever their rules are, are first. But I think for education purposes, and especially now, well, always, but today is, if you can comfort a parent, I'd say that's a top priority.
I agree. Yep. Jim, did you have?
Yeah, so in both examples for elementary and middle school, there are examples where one side of the street went to one school and one side went to the other school. Does that affect one side would be bused and the other side would have to walk? Or, I know it's a tough decision, but is it an issue where because they both live on the same street now, my best friend is going to go to a different school than I am? Or does it, does it change the numbers that much by splitting a street down the middle to go to different schools?
So I guess I'd have to look at the specific number in the street that you're wondering about.
Okay.
We've split South Street in half for a number of years since we did the redistricting only.
Okay.
Because of, you know, for the bus routes, for the distance. The Kimball-Laurol Street area I was talking about, we were sending them to Long Joe, they're walkers. There's still going to be, in some instances, those students walkers to Memorial, but it's a different walk, right? So we try to make it as equitable as we can when we're looking at all the factors, right? I don't think we have a lot of students, like, living next door to each other going to different schools.
Okay.
They might be on the opposite side of South Street just because it's well-populated, you know, so.
Has to be one.
Try to keep, like, Meadowbrook area together, all together, like, so all those things would be at the same, the, you know, Green Acres area altogether.
Okay.
All right, you're going to run into some, you run into some difficult busing problems where I live on one side of the street and I don't get bused, but the person across the street gets bused, and they pick up the bus in front of my house.
Right.
You know? You're going to run into, it's going to happen.
It happens all the time, right?
Yeah.
They see the bus stops in front of my house.
Yeah, yeah.
And let's not lose sight of the fact that we also, I know even myself, we get those phone calls, they simply don't like the school.
Oh, yeah.
Correct, yes.
They have a preconceived notion of the school. They say, I don't want my kid going there, I want him, you know, it's a middle school. I don't want him to go to Long Joe, I want him to go to Memorial instead.
Yeah.
Now you establish a precedent. You start saying, okay, we're going to do that for you, but what about?
Right, and you don't want to get into a situation that's not equitable or doesn't appear equitable, right?
Yeah.
No, but your committee that handles the requests, they need to, it needs to be a good committee, and they need to stick to their rules and, you know, it's not, as the mayor said, you know, I just don't like that school, you know, that's.
Yeah.
And we do, we do listen to them. I think Mr. Jokola and Mr. Thompson know that, I do listen to the parents, I meet with them, I'm available for them.
Eva, didn't we have a case last, a couple of months ago where they were just over or under the distance for busing?
I think they're on two different sides of the street.
They weren't entitled to busing, they wanted to be, and they were, they kept falling back on the fact that they were only, you know, I don't know, 30 yards.
And I get to blame you guys because you set the distance.
Yeah, and then the next, 30 yards, and the next. And then the next, 30 yards, and the next person's 30 yards.
But I mean, anything can be done, but it will be an increased cost in transportation in some circumstances, so.
And we try to accommodate. We have made special accommodations. We've moved students, we, you know, so it's not that we're rigid.
Right.
But we have to have a line, right?
And I guess as Eva's saying too, we've made accommodations in the morning for people to hop on the bus to get to school.
Right, yes.
So that's, yeah.
Again, another thought that was generated, walkers, and you would know the walker routes, but there are some schools that have a neighborhood that they walk through that's, well, through the years, I've heard about drug dealers. As soon as you come out of school, I don't know, Academy Road, whatever, around there. And being adult and realizing that that is, could be a predatory area for drug dealing, do you consider secondarily, as part of your plan, I would even say, police being around the area at the time that the walkers are walking, so that it's not lingering thought there? You don't need to answer me, I'm just bringing up that situation, okay? Just like I think of Memorial as being a dangerous area for walkers, you know, you'd have to consider the issues at any particular locale, huh? Okay, it's not a question to be answered, it's just a thought to put out.
Thank you, yes, no, good thoughts, thank you.
All right, okay.
Thank you, Eva.
So the, where we're at today, and really what the reconfiguration will look like for next year is Crocker, Rhine Gold, and McKay will become grade one through five schools. The pre-canned kindergartens will move from the, from Crocker, Rhine Gold, and McKay and be centralized at South Street. As I mentioned earlier, you know, we will be looking to hire a new director or principal for that school with a background in early childhood. You know, as the mayor and Eva were talking earlier, and going back now, it's almost three years, when we were doing Crocker visioning with Frank Locker, and looking at what is best for students from a social, emotional development and academic perspective, was to have fifth grade in the elementary schools. So that's something that has guided our thought process over the last few years in terms of what are different ways to do that. And with Crocker being, the Crocker Project now approved by the MSBA Board, being a one through five, eligible to be a one through five school, it kind of, it's a good time to look at redistricting as Crocker will be built by February of 2025 and have the grade configuration in place for that. But also, the fifth grade is one of the most, I'll say, called for grade transitions from elementary to middle, and again, going back to the visioning from three years ago, from a former, well, assistant principal of a middle school who's still with us in a different capacity, and I think Mr. Stevens, who were there too, bringing fifth grade into elementary has been a, I guess, a big request or concern, at least in the almost 14 years I've been with the district, in terms of the calls that I've received as superintendent or in my prior role. So McKay, which is currently a K through eight school, will go down to being a one through five school. Again, and on the right-hand side, we have the number of sections for each grade. And Memorial and Long Joe would be grade six through eight middle schools, with the fifth grade returning to the elementary schools at McKay, Rhine Gold, and Crocker. So clearly, you know, Fitchburg High School, Goodrich Academy, they stay the same, and the, again, the number of sections for Memorial and Long Joe are over in there in the right-hand column.
And when he talks about sections, that's number of classrooms for each grade level.
So the, you know, the thing that I mentioned earlier on, and we're still in discussion, is the location of the special programs that we have for students. You know, looking at pathways, we have three pathway classes at South Street, two learning perspectives at Memorial, a couple of autism program and guided learning classes at Long Joe, a few pathways at Crocker, two pathways classes and two guided learnings at McKay, and two perspectives at Rhine Gold. Again, this is something that we're still reviewing, and again, as the header on this slide states, it is still in draft form. And that's, that's it for tonight. Any additional questions?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on?
Moving on, tonight we have a, almost a handful of donations. Tonight, I'll go through them quickly. They're listed as action items for the school committee to approve. We have a $500 donation for the students' benefit of McKay Arts Academy from Ann Anderson, who's a former teacher with the district. During the holidays, we received a donation of toys and clothing with an estimated value of about $12,000 from the staff. Matt Fornier, we're president of Elite Construction and Design. We also received a donation of 250 boxes of fresh fruits and vegetables with an estimated value of $10,000, part of the Fitchburg Families First, distributed with assistance and support of the Cathedral Fund and the Fitchburg Art Museum. I think that was the weekend before Christmas, is that right? The 18th?
Yeah.
So we helped out a lot of families there, and I think that was the second distribution that we've had in terms of, there were gift cards also part of that from the Cathedral Fund. We have donation of $639 to support a variety of student activities from Hanaford Helps Then tonight, we have a grant to be submitted. It's a math acceleration grant for $30,000, and Rhine Gold is the recipient school.
And that was the grant that Mr. Shalafou emailed everyone before it was due.
Okay.
I got approval.
And again, we recommend, because we do not have yet the signed contract from the SEIU, action item number 22-122 be postponed until it's signed, and then?
Hold.
Hold.
Held, yeah. Thank you. And lastly, the agreement between the cafeteria managers and the Fitchburg School Committee is on the docket for an action item. So, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend we bundle 22-117 through 22-121 and do 22-123 separately.
Seconded? Motion made and seconded to bundle 117 up through and including 121. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve?
Sorry. Motion to approve the bundle?
Second.
I'm sorry. Approve the bundle, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Make a motion to approve the 22-123.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So we're holding 22-122.
Yeah.
That'll be held in committee, okay? No need for executive session?
Motion for adjournment. Second.
Made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.